From Corolla One Studios in Glendale, California, this is the Adam Corolla Show. Adam's guest today, LA mayoral candidate, Joe Buscaino, with Gina Grad on news and Bald Brian on sound effects. And now, he puts more planning into evacuating his bowels than the administration put into evacuating Afghanistan. Adam Corolla.
Yeah, get it on. Got to get it on. It's a choice we're gonna make. Get it on. Thanks for tuning in. Thanks for telling a friend. Love that about you, right Gina Grad?
That's right.
And Bald Brian?
Shit, yeah!
All right, well, what am I grateful for? Well, I was just in here with Dr. Drew for a while doing some shows, and I'm grateful for the fact that I have had some on-air talent, folks I've worked with, Dr. Drew, 25 years plus, you know, Jimmy Kimmel.
That is the greatest story I have ever heard.
Don't forget anybody.
25 years plus, Skip from Catch a Contractor, and you know, Mark Garagos and guys like that, and I consider myself thick as thieves with these guys. Very, very, very good friends.
He didn't even look at us.
Very good friends, all these years.
Read between the lines.
Uh-oh, Bald Brian over here. Yes, you cut me off. I was saving the best for last. Gina, I'm happy that, as the years, as we get into a quarter-century, that I still look forward to hanging out with these guys on and off the air. All right, we've got some hot Love Boat talk.
Oh, good.
I have a philosophical discussion that has to do with the birds and bats, that, as I had a strange coincidence, I was standing around outside, I was sitting outside earlier today, and I was watching a dragonfly. And I also noticed that when I get in my swimming pool, that the dragonflies are hovering just above the water. They hang out on the ponds and the pools and stuff, and they dart. They're erratic flyers. And then Drew was telling me the story about going out in his backyard and saw a big bat, big by bat standards, you know, showed me a little video of it, had like a 16-inch wingspan, like, you know, it wasn't your miniature bat. And then I realized we're kind of freaked out by bats, and I was thinking, yeah, I was a little freaked out by the dragonfly. I wasn't freaked out, but they're erratic, so you don't, they fly in a very erratic pattern. You don't know where they're going. And then I realized bats are very erratic flyers. They come at you and they go all over the fucking place. And then I thought, everyone loves a hawk, you know, so simultaneously, I was looking, yes, I was looking at this dragonfly, like darting all over the place, and then I was looking up in the sky, I saw the hawk soaring in a very slow circle, you know? And here's another side question, I'll get back to my main point, as I was driving home from Laguna Seca through the, you know, open land of California, so dozens and dozens of hawks with the slow, slow circle, which we've all seen a million times. No one sees a lot of them in action.
No.
You know what I mean?
Not dive bombing anything.
Yes, they're just, they're just this weird, slow circle, but there were 30 of them over this one hill, you figure one would be going for a rabbit.
Yeah.
Just something you could sink your teeth into, right? Just one of them just dropping in and grabbing on something, nah, just all, just kind of slow.
Get to work, Hawks, is what you're saying.
Every once in a while, you hear a story of like, "A hawk took his Pomeranian."
Right.
We know, we don't see them actually in action.
No, they're kind of like snakes when you put the rat into the aquarium or terrarium with them, which is like, eh, I'll eat it, but I'll wait for, what time are you going to bed? All right, half hour after you go to bed, you'll wake up, the rat will be gone, but you'll not see me do any, any action. All right, so, I was talking to Drew about dragonflies and bats and how they're kind of off-putting, and how hawks are sort of soothing, bald eagles when we're in Alaska, just very soothing watching, and then I realized-
That's the show where you and Drew help people their relationships and addict your problems?
Yes, with insights like-
And ornithological humor.
Like this, that's why you didn't make the list, Brian. So, I said, "We don't like erratic," and then I started realizing, I don't like when people are erratic. They, it creates anxiety, you know, the people-
The unpredictable.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about people who stab you, I'm talking about people where, you know, you sort of make plans with them and then you have to keep checking back because you're never quite sure, like, are they gonna be there? Does this mean we're done?
Or if the phone, if the phone rings and it's them, and you're like, is this person gonna be crying or, you know, hysterically laughing?
That's what I was gonna say, the emotionally erratic is the most dangerous.
Right, and so, like the bat and the dragonfly, they don't really pose a danger, but you do kind of want to hang out with the circle soars, you know what I mean? Like, the people, you know, you know, Dr. Drew, aforementioned, you know, Mark Garagos, Jimmy Kimmel, they're always in the same mood, they're never erratic, you don't, it's never like, you know, you never have that, "5:00 PM means 5:00, it doesn't mean 5:30, they will start the movie at dark light, they will lock us out, and I need you to be there." It's like, it's soothing being around those people, and I realize in nature, we're off, we're put off by erratic, and you should think to yourself, like, are you erratic? Are you the person, are you the dragonfly in nature that is fucking freaking people out? You know, again, not, not, you know, they don't pose a danger, but you don't feel like you can time them.
Yeah, off-putting.
Yes, so, are you a dragonfly or are you a hawk?
I like that.
Question number one. Number two, now, hot Love Boat talk.
Oh, good.
Because it's all happening.
Yeah, why do you have this waiter captain thing?
Well, that's the captain.
Oh, the, not a waiter captain?
That's Captain Stube.
Oh, my God.
Merrill Stube. I got the jacket, somebody purchased the jacket for me, the actual jacket-
Hero.
-that Captain Stube wore, who just passed a few weeks, few months ago. Dawson, Dawson has it, or sorry, has the letter.
Dear Adam, enclosed is Captain Stube's jacket. I included the documentation from the purchase for your records.
Way more than my parents have done for me, zero to 18, already. Already, already, just Captain Stube's jacket.
A letter!
And a letter of authenticity, you have now soared past the combined efforts of Jim and Chris Corolla.
Enjoy. I wanted to thank you and your staff for all the years of entertainment and education that have been provided to me. The show has so many amazing guests, and I have picked up business and time management advice, travel tips, et cetera, from the show. When I received information that the jacket was up for sale, I emailed Chris. I wanted to bid on it. I wanted to bid on it, but on the show, you said you might buy it for Dr. Drew, so I was afraid that we were both going to bid. Luckily, I was able to get the jacket. I enjoy the stories about what you watched and how you grew up. My upbringing was somewhat similar, and like you, I had no idea how people would plan vacations, take flights, make reservations for hotels. Watching Love Boat was like watching people on another planet, because I did not know how people would even be able to be a part of a cruise. Due to that upbringing, I also have a lot of tales from the cheap. One, my dad and grandpa wore dead man's shoes that they found in a dumpster.
Oh, my.
Two, my dad tears elastic off his old underwear when he finally throws them away.
That's not bad.
So he can use the elastic, for example, a garbage bag holder.
What?
Wait.
Wow.
I didn't see it go that way.
Tom Hanks wouldn't have done that on the island.
No.
He would have been, well-
He would have had more dignity.
Another pair of shorts to wash up at some point. I'm not gonna get into that.
That's insane, that's some prison thinking.
He also cuts the middle out of worn-out t-shirts, and he wears it like a coat.
Oh, he like cuts it up the middle, oh my God.
He doesn't cut the middle out, I mean, he slices it down the middle.
Why four, if you already have a t-shirt?
I don't know.
Okay.
To cool off.
Oh, there you go.
My dad will wear a paper towel on his chest that he will rinse off all day so he can use the same paper towel.
Fuck.
My dad will, four, my dad will bathe in my mom's bathwater.
Hmm, that's like something you say in the vows.
Number five, my grandma would wash out restaurant-to-go containers and pile them on top of the fridge for reuse.
I do that.
Yeah, I do that, too.
And six, my grandpa wore a cat toy with a jingle ball as a belt when his belt wore out.
Wow, stop, I can't take anymore.
Extremely thin.
I have so many memories of the different events that I have attended over the years. I work many hours running my business, and your events are beacons of light on my busy calendar. God bless to you and your staff, Florence Brimmer.
Love her.
Thank you.
I know, Florence is amazing.
She's amazing, she sent me the Sopranos Bible with all of this trivia and stuff, she's awesome.
Yeah, she donated a lot to Left with Bald Brian, she's a lawyer, she's fantastic.
Love, and her daughter's awesome.
Yeah, I love that, and it also, you know, much like, you know, incest or molestation, kids normalize everything quickly. Like, if you could normalize having sex with your dad, you could certainly normalize wearing a cat toy for a belt, you know what I mean? Like, you just go, you go right there, you normalize, and then you get out, and that's how, that's what happens. Then, then, like, like being, you know, like Bo Bergdahl being removed from the Taliban or something, we gotta deprogram you, that's that-
Mackenzie Phillips.
I was-
Heidi Hearst.
You know, Danny Two Sheets, that, that came out of my mouth when I was 34 and a half, like, "Two Sheets?" I wasn't 19.
Top end of all?
I had soared through adult life and was-
Andover?
I was living in my, "Why don't you make a, make like a taco out of the one?"
Yeah, like, your little sleeping bag.
Yeah, like, I was 35 when I was marveling at Two Sheets on a bed. I was, it was, by the way, it was one of those things, like, you know, when you lose an embarrassing bet, like, you're so sure of something, like, nobody, come on, "Two Sheets, Daniel, nobody uses-"
For the Queen of England.
I've never met anyone who used, I've seen every episode of Dynasty, they didn't have Two Sheets. And then we walked up to every human being, like, "Of course, I have them on my bed." Like, "No!"
What do you do with the other one?
You found the one guy who has Two Sheets to substantiate your crazy Two Sheet story.
What confused you more at the time when you learned about it, duvet, duvet cover, or bed screw?
Oh, like the dust rubble?
Goes around the, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, that was all-
The elderly call it.
That was, that kind of stuff was like, the equivalent to ordering an appetizer and a cocktail with your meal, like, maybe-
It still don't do that.
Most people do.
No, never.
Maybe you could go out to eat to Sizzler, but there is no Langastino, and nobody's getting a margarita. I mean, it's like this, okay. Oh, Maxipata didn't know about Two Sheets until, until recently either.
What does that mean?
Until I started dating Jen, like, having a top sheet.
I understand that, but when you buy sheets, they come with Two Sheets and Two Sheets, okay, what do you think that's for?
I always thought, I always slept on top of the other sheet, thinking that was for like allergies or something. What?
Wait, so you put them both down? Well, that's just insane.
It's ridiculous.
For allergies?
Yeah, I could, I could remember-
You know how magically sheets protect you from allergens?
We didn't buy sheets, we just had like, old fitted sheet, that was the sheet. And when I first started traveling, when I had some kind of success, and I would remember staying in like a hotel room in New York, I was like Crocodile Dundee, like, I got into the bed, like, "What's everything all tucked in for?"
You're on the floor.
I feel so suffocated.
I'm so used to have my feet hanging out of the back of the thing with just the one, we didn't have a comforter, you had a blanket. So you just had a blanket and a fitted sheet, and that's how, you know, like prison.
Well, and I think that this must be like the Steddel DNA in my house, because, you know, we were middle-class, everything's fine, but I didn't have a comforter until I moved to New York. I thought you just take whatever, you know, throws and afghans and patchwork quilts that your grandma brings, and that's what's on your bed.
Yeah, like, when it would get cold, you just get another blanket and throw it on top of your blanket.
That was for the fancy, we didn't have those.
I didn't have a comforter until I was well in my twenties, I had a, I had a bedspread, I don't know if that's any different, it's this, it's a half an inch, you know, three-quarters of an inch.
But you weren't using couch throws.
No, I was not.
Interesting.
Well, so, speaking of Love Boat, and I will try this jacket on.
Oh, I don't know that it's your size.
Gavin McLeod must have died, he died like five weeks ago or something.
But you could fit in there.
He just died.
But he looked 65 in Love Boat.
I know, I was talking to Mike Lynch, working on the book yesterday on the ride home, and I had this bizarre revelation in the, you know, Wilford Brimley cocoon kind of revelation.
Paul Rudd, Wilford Brimley?
Uh, let's see, well, how old are you, Brian?
I am turning 43 next month.
Okay.
Wow, 43.
So you are older than Mary Tyler Moore and Lou Grant, Ed Asner?
In the show?
Well, Ed Asner, when he was playing the role of Lou Grant, you're older, older than he is, or was, back then.
That's insane.
Which is insane, if memory serves, Mary Tyler Moore hit the air in 1970, which is 51 years ago, and Ed Asner's like 92 or something, so, he was like 41, but the point is, I was talking to Mike about this, the guy's like-
He was an old man, making air quotes.
Oh, yeah.
Right, but also, you know what it was? It wasn't just, you know, it wasn't just the good living everyone's doing now, old guys wore old guys' shoes, you didn't wear Nikes or whatever, your kids, you didn't wear the same tennis, I wear the same tennis shoes my son wears, that, you wouldn't have done that, you wore man shoes, you would dress differently, you wouldn't have a bunch of bracelets or man bun or anything, funky facial hair, like, you were a dude.
Happy to distinguish yourself from the kids.
A cigar and a brandy snifter and weird black leather shoes with no rubber on the sole, and you were a dude, you were trying to be a dude. And as I, I was talking to Mike about this, because we were talking about this concept, it was Ask an Asshole, we're working on the questions, and the one question was from a woman, and she said, she said, "McLeod died May 29th," so the very end of May, 90, okay. So they said, "I got adult kids, they don't want to move out, they don't want to move out." And so we started saying, we started by going, "Okay, what's wrong with kids today? Like, what's going on with kids? Why are they hanging out, this delayed adolescence, you know, just staying there, right?" And then, I started, Asner was, how old Max Pat?
He was 47, 48 when he start, when Lou Grant premiered.
Yeah, Lou Grant's a TV, Lou Grant's a spinoff from Mary Tyler Moore.
It was the character Lou Grant.
You're still right!
The 1970 part, yeah, well, he probably spun it off seven, six years later, but anyway. So I started thinking about the kids, you know, these kids, the 24-year-olds, you know, living at home, and then what's up? And then I thought, "Wait a minute, I don't think it's them, it's the adults being almost contemporaries for a couple things, a couple small things. Used to be, you know, father, and you called the boy son or boy, you know what I mean? Now it's your buddy. You know, it's a friend. He sees, people are like, "My kids, my son's my best friend," you know, well, who the fuck wouldn't want to live with their best buddy? You know what I mean? I wanted to get the fuck away from my parents as fast as I possibly could. There was no, "I want to chillax with these old fucks."
They weren't making it comfortable.
No, and there was no, you know, I was living in a garage, I wasn't even inside the house, and I was like, "I gotta get out of here, man." And, but if you think about it, it's not so much that the kids are sort of delayed or stunted in their growth.
Because they're just kids.
They're kid, well, they're 23-year-old kids now, but we used to all want, the whole, all right, couple angles. One is peer pressure. If we, if I knew some guy that was 23 and not going to college full-time and living at home, he was a fucking loser.
Right.
We would make fun of that person endlessly. Same with the driver's license.
Yes.
If you didn't, Ray didn't get his driver's license till he was 18, it's all we did was make fun of him verbally, he then physically beat us all. But the point is, is that was an anomaly, it was weird, and you had to get your driver's license, 16. Well, the peer pressure's gone now, you cannot have your license at 17 or 18, and your peers aren't gonna attack you, and you're not a loser living at home at 21 and taking a couple of col, you know, courses at the Juco. So, but the parents have come down, and now it's like there's contemporaries. You know, mom and dad used to be like weird shoes, sweaters, friends, ribbon candies, you know, like, just weird, you know, no, you guys weren't gonna sit around and listen to Pearl Jam together, you didn't go to the same events, you didn't watch the same movies.
I'd rather you drink at the house, so just stay here, I'll make some cocktails.
Yes, that's where we're at now, and that didn't exist. You wanted to drink, you had to go to the park.
Right.
You know, and so it was like-
You had to go to the woods!
A decent human being.
Right, so let's, might as well just get the fuck out of here. I got nothing common with these old people, they don't seem to like me, I don't like them, and they want me out.
Yeah, and my, the first example that shoots in my head, because we watched a lot of old television when I was a kid, a lot of Hugh Beaumont, Ward Cleaver, if there was really great news from the Beaver from Wally, there was no hugs, there was, it was a, "Well, that's fine, boy," and he'd walk away.
And I like, I liked in Leave It to Beaver when Ward was around on a Saturday, and he was in casual garb.
Oh, yeah.
It was dress shirt, tie, and cardigan.
Yes.
That's how you knew he was-
That's how you knew he was taking the day off.
Relaxing.
Yes.
All right, so, I got a Love Boat clip, so you're excited, I know. And-
Who are you talking to?
I, I love, I love them hitting on passengers. I love-
Raisin' Lee in the open.
I love when the crew competes to see which passenger they're gonna hit on.
You gotta pass the time.
This good-looking blonde getting on the boat, I like when they hit on them right when they walk down the gangway, you know, just as soon as they literally set foot on the boat, they pound.
They call dibs.
Doc and Gopher do it the most. Isaac couldn't do it because he was black.
It was just too bad, he owned the best cocktail of all.
He was the bartender, and he was perpetually single, and he was younger and everything, but he was black, so they couldn't have him, unless the Pointer Sisters came on that, but even him, even, it was also kind of considered like uncouth, a little threatening for the black man to be-
Hitting on the white girl.
Yeah, pushing himself sexually, even on a black woman, like, it was still like the sexualized, it's interesting, because, you know, we're a million, well, first off, you know, we weren't that far away from Jim Crow in 1979, you know, we were only 25 years or whatever away from that, we're much further-
A decade and a half.
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't that far from that era, or, yeah, you're right.
Silver Rights era, yeah, the 60s.
Right, yeah, so we weren't, I mean, yeah, the whole civil rights thing was barely 15 years away, even if it was the Pointer Sisters, the black trio coming onto the boat, it was, I think it was considered bad optics to see the virile black man hitting on them sexually, even within his own race, so-
Well, I'm happy to say that anyone listening to this under 40 cannot wrap their head around what you're saying.
Right, so Isaac, who was young and single and a bartender and ready to mingle, did not push himself on any, he was always just making drinks for all the white guys, the doctor and the purser, Gopher, who were trying to get laid, he was really just going to be sort of, he was just gonna kind of hold their hand through the process. Pointer Sisters?
Yeah.
That's Isaac.
There was an episode where the Pointer Sisters came on board and he sung, Isaac sung with them, he's so fine, and it was a great episode. It's, uh, may not be politically incorrect or correct these days, but the Pointer Sisters had like, one sister that was attractive and the other one was okay, but they had one that fit the definition of homely.
Oh, really?
Which, they don't, they don't, we don't have homely anymore.
No.
Because homely, first off, you can't be fat and homely, that, you're just fat.
Oh.
You see, back then, you could be skinny, but it was something with the nose and the teeth, and they fix that shit now.
Yeah.
Back then, it was like every, there were, every, every guy over 50 went to grade school with one kid with a short leg, and they extra add a leaf heel on the, on the boot, you know what I mean? Like, they added that, we all, everyone, you don't see that kid anymore.
No.
My, my son doesn't have that kid.
He doesn't have to exist.
It got fixed.
Yes.
Yeah, I think they did that with homely.
Yeah, I think you're on to something.
All right, but anyway, sorry, Max Pat, shall we, we'll play this, play this episode. All right, they're getting on the boat, and Doc and, Doc and Gopher see some fresh meat, but, but, Doc's seen this meat before.
Oh.
Here we go.
Oh, oh, Doc, 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 look!
Single blonde.
Boy, if she isn't a slice of heaven, my eyes go back into the shop for repairs.
Yeah, then you better call for an appointment, she sailed with us before. I spent an evening with her, it was like trying to snuggle up to an iceberg.
You know, Doc, let's face it, there might be one or two women out there that won't tumble here into Miss Charms.
Gopher, at medical school, I majored in neurogina zones. If I can't hit the spot, they're clinically dead. Well, well, what a delightful surprise, Linda Trent! So nice to see you again. I'd like to introduce you to Gopher Smith, Linda Trent.
Hi, I can't help noticing you're in Aloha 152.
Aloha 152, well-
Kisses her head.
I'd remember that.
Don't bother, I've already had my flu shots.
I guess some guys just can't take iceberg for an answer.
All right, so, she sailed with them before alone, and Doc aggressively hit on her last time she was alone. Why, why is she coming back for more?
That doesn't make any sense.
Subtly extremely racist that they couldn't put Isaac forward as the sex symbol, he's a handsome guy, swinging bachelor, and instead Doc, this fucking dweeb with the glasses, like, he's the swing dick.
That's the thing, I mean, you can't deny Doc's confidence, but where does he get it? Who's he?
He majored in neurogina zones, in med school, didn't you hear him?
That's some, that's some class action shit.
I do love that Princess Cruise Lines are signing off on these scripts, like, our shipboard physician in major neurogina zones, that's good, that's the message we want to put out there to the public who may be thinking about cruising.
Oh, my God, and were there only three women's names available in the 70s? Linda, Helen, and Carol?
Yeah, kind of depend on how old they were, and, and so, there was the other conceit that was like, which is like, attractive woman, traveling alone, she cruises alone, and she just wants to be left alone. So she, of course, anyone who hit on her, she had to shoot them all down, because, but, guess how, guess how Jim Stafford, Jim Stafford was the guy who sung "I Don't Like Spiders and Snakes, But That Ain't What It Takes to Love," you'll know the song. Jim Stafford and his, had a sidekick, he had a monkey, named Whackadoo.
It was the 70s.
We have the song.
Spiders and snakes swamp witch under the Scotsman's kilt?
Yeah, Jim Stafford was a good-looking guy who had a novelty hit called Spiders and Snake.
And it all comes full circle and snaps into focus, he has his own theater in Branson.
Of course he does. And he was good-looking, and he got right into her pants, and you know how, any Ahab, the A-Rab, or that good novelty stuff?
Yeah, like, you know, The Winner by Bobby Bear, I think, anyway, he liked all that sort of tongue-in-cheek, you know?
I could see him opening for the Oak Ridge Boys.
Mm-hmm, well, anyway, he got into her pants eventually. Now, here's how it works. Here's, here's, here's how it all works. This is another thing I've learned, which is, the chick's frigid, she, she shoots, everyone who comes, she goes, gets in a tight bikini, lays down by the pool, and then every guy walks up to her, he just shoots him down.
What a bitch.
Right? But he walks up to hit on her, and he says, "Is this lounge next to you taken?" And she goes, "Oh, please, I've heard every," and he goes, "No, I just went, I like to keep an extra space between me and other people, so I'm not bothered." extra space between me and other people, so I'm not bothered. And she's like, what?
That's intriguing.
Intriguing mystery man. And then, you know, later on, they run into each other and she sits down at his table at dinner and she goes, I hope you're not, and he goes, no, I just finished. I'm gonna leave. And he gets up and leaves and she's like, ooh, I want some of this. And then he announces he's celibate. And now the panties are off. Like, she's just, she goes nuts. So you could tell a woman back in the seventies who was hot, you don't want sex with her. And then she would want to have sex with you.
Good to know.
Reverse psychology.
That's how it worked.
Being frigid was like a big thing in the seventies and like I not heard that term.
She's cold fish.
Thirty years.
Right. Yep. All right. Let's see. We got, uh, what do we got? We got Ticketmaster? We got Adam Carolla's Unprepared. We got a two minute and 30 second Ticketmaster. I do not remember this one. Where's it from?
It's in Golden.
It's in Golden, Colorado. All right. We'll play that because I've got a bunch of shows coming up and we'll do some of this on stage. Here we go. Ticketmaster. I don't know anything about Ticketmaster.
Pearl Jam fought them for a little while.
I wish, I wish I was like Pearl Jam. I love all these, these guys that aren't sellouts. I'm a fucking total sellout. Pearl Jam fought Ticketmaster. But first off, Eddie Vedder doesn't need money. Look at him. I mean, he doesn't put a lot of product in his hair. He wears the same fucking shirt every day. It's not like he's, uh, you know, got three ex-wives and five chicks he knocked up on the road. He's a fucking low dollar guy. So Eddie Vedder doesn't need money. I will tell you what a huge sellout I am. I, unlike Eddie Vedder, I made fun of, um, I made fun of Mountain Dew. I made fun of Mountain Dew my entire career. I hate Mountain Dew. Mountain Dew, I labeled Mountain Dew nectar of the tards. All right. I made fun of Mountain Dew on the radio for 10 years. And at some point, Mountain Dew came to me and they said, we will give you $50,000 to do a voiceover campaign for Mountain Dew. And I said, where do I sign? And Jimmy Kimmel, who has morals and scruples and is more in the Eddie Vedder camp than he is in the Adam Carolla gay porn camp, he looked down his nose at me and he said, you made fun of Mountain Dew for 10 years and now they come sniffing around and they offer you $50,000 and you jump on it? What a fucking sellout hack you are. And I said, Jimmy, who's the fucking joke on? I made fun of Mountain Dew for 10 years and they're paying me 50 grand? I think I'm the winner in this proclamation. Thank you. Next ball. By the way, I gotta, I gotta say, Golden, Colorado is like the cleanest town I've ever been in. A Ticketmaster. What year is it? Is Ticketmaster even up and running anymore? Hey, we'll go down to the Licorice Pizza and get ourselves a ticket for Papa Do Run Run. Papa Do Run Run. Used to play, uh, Knott's Berry Farm or Disneyland.
The monster truck rally.
And the monster, yeah, they played the infield at the Orange County International Raceway. All right, let's see. We gotta eat your feelings. I got some more. Oh, I got a, I got a top 10 SportsCenter highlight. I think Kalen found it.
Yeah.
To look at. First, I'll tell you about Simply Safe. Simply Safe's founders Chad and Eleanor Lorenz designed their first security system in their kitchen because their friend's home was broken into. I remember that story. Making people feel safe is what Simply Safe has been doing since the moment they started 15 years ago. Passion to protect people drives every engineering detail and customer interaction. Simply Safe has highly trained security experts ready whenever you need them. During a fire, burglary, medical emergency, or even if you just need to talk to someone to set up your system. My listeners save 20% and get your first month free when you sign up for interactive monitoring service. Visit simplysafe.com/Adam. Get your custom system and customize it online at simplysafe.com/Adam and start protecting your home and family today. That is two I's, simplysafe.com/Adam. Okay, we will take ourselves a quick break. We'll come back with Eat Your Feelings. I got some, many other thoughts. I got a Newsome Larry Elder mashup to play. We can do all that right after this.
Gina, how much time are you gonna need to get everything?
I mean.
It's time for Nicaraguan Name That Movie with Adam's buddy Oswaldo. See if you can guess which movie this famous line is from.
Coming out, coming out, wherever you are.
If you said Cape Fear.
I'm out, come out, wherever you are.
You're correct. Now, back to the show.
All right. Well, we'll do some Eat Your Feelings. I got, um, a Larry Elder Biden mashup, or I should say Newsome mashup. Also, I got a couple of phone calls up there. So let me just talk to Pablo, 32 from Houston.
Miho.
Miho? Wait, which miho do you want? I will let you direct me.
Yeah, the inquisitive miho, you know, walking into the home, not sure where, you know, where the sun may be.
Well, when I walk into the home, I'm enthusiastic.
No, the next one.
Yeah, I know. Because when I come into the home, I'm ready to make him his favorite meal. He's, um.
Miho number two is he has to respond to several mihos and you're like, well, where?
Yeah, yeah. First, I just went shopping. I got all the ingredients to menudo.
Yeah.
And that's miho's favorite. So when I come home, miho. So that's, that's number one. But Pablo, I noticed the lights are off and the sun is going down and no one seems to be at home. So I sheepishly walk up the stairs. And when I get to the top of the stairs, the landing, see his doors ajar to his bedrooms, just about four inches.
Lights are out.
Miho? That's, you know, that's one, that's an inquisitive one. And then I pushed a door open and I see his legs. So, miho. It keeps going. Ready to keep adding mihos because I, I started doing that in like season two or season three, the manchon. Each season would have to keep adding them on.
Yeah. Do you have one where an acceptance miho? Like accepting the fate of the situation?
Wow. No, I, I had, I had the, I think the ones we tacked on, I'd have to go do it in the writer's room versus sitting at my desk and working. Do, uh, do, uh, there was the, at the funeral over the open casket.
Sure.
As I was crossing myself, you know what I mean? Miho. There's that one. And then there was the one that was 18 months down the, down the road where I saw some kid go by on a bicycle that was reminiscent of me. And I was like, miho? There's that, there's the last miho too, where I sort of thought I spotted.
Oh, God, that's so sad.
Yeah. He'll be missed.
Whistle.
Pablo?
Yes.
Were you called miho growing up?
Gina, Adam, first time. Yeah, well, I mean, I, my mom did, you know, mihito, you know, kind of like, you know, growing up in, in Colombia and South America, that was the, how's it going? What are you up to? And so, uh, to my heart. But I just want to say, I look forward to always listening to the pod, first thing that I do after I make a cup of coffee. I truly am making way to start the day.
Now, think about the greatness of America. Cause you know, you talk about some of these other countries and they go, well, what does this word mean? You know, what is mahalo mean? Well, it means hi and hello and goodbye and then thank you and, and all this kind of stuff. And then Americans, we have like 15 words just for the vagina. You know what I mean? So we make extra words for stuff.
We're from the land of abundance.
Everyone else has one word for five things. We have 15 words for one thing.
Brian, please.
Make it 16. So go ahead, Pablo.
Yeah. So I, you know, first off, I, I want to say, um, I really enjoyed watching Winning the Racing Life of Paul Newlin and Uppity.
Oh, thanks.
Love both docs. And we're thinking LeMans is coming out this, this weekend.
Yeah.
Wanted the idea of a doc around the Triple Crown of Motorsport. It's only happened once. And there's another, I guess, Bad Boy and Running, who was also a teammate of Scott Pruitt for a short time.
Well, there was, so that was the whole Ken Miles thing. He was gonna win the Triple Crown. He was gonna win Daytona, Sebring, and LeMans the same year. That was, that was what he was gonna do before he was told to slow down at LeMans.
And there is, there is the one around, so I know that's the Triple Crown of Endurance, but there's also the Triple Crown of the Indy 500, the LeMans 24 Hours, and the Grand Prix of Monaco, which has only been done by Graham Hill from the 1960s and 1970s is the only person to have done it.
Yeah.
There's only two active drivers that are in the running. One of them would be Fernando Alonso and the other one is Juan Pablo Montoya.
Pablo, Juan Pablo Montoya. Yes?
There is no end to the information that you have provided us today.
Thanks, Pablo.
What actually, you have a, you actually have a good connection because you were, when Mario Andretti drove the two seater car in the 2000 year of the Indy 500, that was you as the guest celebrity.
Yeah. I rode in the tandem car with Mario Andretti around Indy, but the car didn't run correctly. And, and Mario was pissed off at the car. Yeah.
That was just an idea for, for a doc. I mean, it's, it may never happen again. There's only just two people that could do it. He's one of them.
The problem is, we have probably seven docs in the works right now. And it's just, oh my God.
When are we getting K-Rock?
Seriously?
Oh, man. Well, we got it, uh, we got it funded.
What?
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, we got it funded and we're thinking it's a three or four parter, K-Rock that is. So we're working on it. You know, it's, it's a, it's a process. Everything's a process. I know that sounds stupid, but what I'm saying is, is, um, we thought K-Rock, the documentary would just be a layup and it hasn't been a layup. I'll put it to you that way. But we finally got it funded and so we're moving ahead with that. Willie T. and Don Cheadle and Brian Koppelman are all getting together and moving ahead with the Uppity Showtime series that they're, we're working on. And there's five other docs. I mean, it's, it's, so it's, it's, it's a kind of thing that, I don't know what to say other than plant some seeds and then go harvest some stuff you planted a year ago and then go plant. Yeah, just rotate them. Like it just, everything is a two-year process. So get started.
Vis a vis K-Rock. That was my number one takeaway from the documentary yesterday. Stud Man? Shit takes forever. Cause that documentary was filmed in 2015. The, the events of the documentary culminate in 2016. It premiered in 2018. And here we are promoting it at Disney Plus in 2021.
It's why most.
Shit takes forever.
It's why most people never go down the, the doc road or the book writing mode or, or whatever it is. It's just, if you're, first off, if you would have asked me to do something that was 18 months, you know, in the making for whatever, you have, you will have, as you get older, you'll have a different relationship with time as we speak about, but also you'll have a different relationship with projects, you know? You'll start to, it's really, it really kind of just distills back to, you know, short term, long term. You know, you can tell which kid is going to be successful by the M and M test. You know, would you like five M and Ms right now? Or can you delay your gratification? And all the people you know who are successful are delayed gratification people. Everything is down the road and stuff. But also you blink your eyes and, you know, the first doc is eight years old. The last book you wrote is 12 years old, or the first book you wrote was 12 years old. Like it, it moves. It's all a good reason to get going. I, it's, it's also a thing, it's probably something that we should discuss as a culture. Cause when, when I was like getting out of high school and, and somebody would say like, well, you could have your certificate to work at a dentist office or drive a diesel truck or something like it. But, but it's a few months, you know, it would take three months of training and be like, oh, three months. Forget about it. Yeah. Couldn't even think, think about it. All right. Uh, let's see. QR code menu. Someone's got a question. You have feelings?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Well, let me talk to Cody, 35, Omaha, Nebraska. What's going on?
Yes, sir. Ace, man, get it on.
Get it on.
Hi.
Long time listener. Thanks for taking my call.
Yeah, what's happening?
Curious if, uh, on your extended breaks, if you guys ran into the new QR code policy that restaurants are implementing, where you have to scan it on your phone to bring the menu up?
Very common out here in Cal, in LA at least.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't want to bag my own groceries and I don't want to serve myself and bring myself menus at restaurants. First of all.
I only bag my own groceries. I love the QR code menus.
Well, I have Adam's bad luck because it's never worked, not once on my phone. I'll just use your phone. You don't know my phone. You don't know me. You don't know my technical problems with a QR code. I don't, so I have to go find somebody, beg for a paper menu, or find some random dude on the street. Can I use your phone? Who do you need to call? Nobody. I need to see what the enchilada special is.
Do you not encounter this problem though? The QR code menu solve. A waiter will like, you know, take your order or whatever. Like, oh, just take those menus. Like, well, I might want to add on something else, or maybe I want to know what the drink menu is, whatever. Next thing you know, it's across the restaurant. You gotta flag them down, go to the menu, make a trip to the menu. It's gonna take forever. If you have the QR code, just got it right on your phone. Just calling it up.
You just got it right on your phone. We don't all have a, have a mat that's, that's standing next to us at the Uber line. Cause I have the same problem. And now I'm the asshole because I dare ask you what the specials are because I can't work it.
I like the QR.
I hate it.
I don't bag my own groceries.
Of course you do.
I like the menu. I like the, you know, tactile little heft. Like, I like the menu. The, um, which you'll never get out of the QR code is one of the most delightful parts of the menu is every once in a while we go, well, it doesn't, and then you turn it over and you go, ooh, whole new world on the back over here. So you never get the turn it over delight. Oh, there's a whole bunch of other shit on the back of it.
Eastern Standard, what's that?
And it's also, it's also a social thing because you're going to a restaurant, say with your friend or your spouse or whatever, and you're just sitting there staring at your phone. You have to tell them, I'm just looking at the menu, but it feels awkward and it sucks.
Well, I don't really experience this because I never eat alone. And whoever I eat with is, it doesn't matter who it is, they're always much better with the technology than I am. So then that person scans it and then it becomes kind of interesting because I sort of sit back and go, read me the menu, you know?
Like a French king.
Yeah, it's like a French king. And I sit there and I sort of look at it and I say, that doesn't strike my fancy. Read on, squire. Read on.
There's the jalapeno poppers.
Just a dance.
Is it? Benedict, I knew a Benedict once. I took his head off in the courtyard. Read on.
Monte Cristo?
Oh, I, the Count.
The Count.
Locked him on that island. Read on. Don't bring up, uh, Fizdale. He was one of my worst generals.
That's the brunch special.
Oh, off in their head. Oh, just give me a mutton chop and some gruel. It's called a day.
Some mead.
Yeah, not that passion fruit gruel either. Just gruel, gruel.
And your finest chalice.
Yes.
Oh, our passion, our gruel, we do it a little different.
Oh, no. What has become of this nation?
This moment bagging my own groceries yesterday, you tell me, okay, I'm bagging my own groceries. I get, I get 85% of the way through and it's time to pay. So I'm like, oh, can you just throw the rest of this? It's all produce at that point. It's bananas, it's apples, it's lemons, it's limes.
We know what produce is.
And I'm trying to explain to you what it is though. And I'm like, oh, you just throw this on top of the eggs. There's two cartons of eggs, two dozen eggs at the bottom of a bag. I'm like, throw on top of the eggs. And the girl, maybe not most experienced, she goes, on top of the eggs?
Right.
Yeah. On top of the eggs. Listen to me, everyone. Eggs come in a cardboard case. They stack the eggs on top of each other. You can put almost anything on top of eggs. Sure, don't put a gallon of milk or fucking orange juice on top. You can put almost anything on top of eggs.
Yes.
They're a fucking cardboard carton.
Smoking like a championship bagger, by the way.
Two years' experience. I'm fucking take on anyone.
Yes.
I put my skills up against anyone.
Are we bringing our own satchels to the store these days? Is that where we're at?
I don't. Yes, we are.
Because we forget?
Yeah. Or I don't, I don't know. I feel weird about it. Oh, oh, but can I tell you what I'm dying to do? And I might do it today because I just remembered the new hack, what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to, um, bring in a laundry hamper.
Mm hmm.
And then you, no, no, no.
To the grocery store?
No, you leave the laundry hamper in the trunk. You put all your shit in the cart. You ask them to scan it, put it back in your cart. And then you, uh, once you get to your car, you put the stuff in the laundry hamper and just carry it into your house. That's the new, the new thing you're supposed to do.
Yeah, or get a nanny and tell her to do it. All right. Uh, thank you, Cody, for sparking a conversation. Did I have him?
Thanks, guys. Take care.
All right. Uh, we gotta Eat Your Feelings. I have this, um, Newsome Elder mashup to play. Why don't we, why don't we do that? I was listening, I was so, if you're in California, there's a lot of, uh, what are we gonna do with the recall discussions going on? Cause we're coming up on it. And, uh, everyone hates Newsome, but.
The devil you know.
I don't know if Newsome has like real supporters. Like, anyone really like or love?
No, it's the fear of the unknown. Better keep him around.
He has that. I, I don't even know that it's that. And I was, I was, I'll touch on something here. He has, he has the teachers unions and he has like labor unions. He has like union money. The unions want him. I don't know what the average, I don't, it seems inconceivable that the average Californian is a big Newsome fan. But it also, in terms of fear of the unknown, like it can't be worse than Newsome. It just, it just can't. I would love the unknown. I don't know what you could do without it is worse than Newsome in terms of Californian. And look, it's not just the way I feel. Like you can look at all the stats about schools and property and how much, you know, how, you know, I think about this all the time. I'm rich and I'm white, but.
Chuck's story, Chuck's house on bar.
Get used to it.
Everyone else around me isn't. And, you know, Olga wants a house and people, the average cost of a house is $800,000 in Cal. It's like.
And we're talking a lean to house.
People make $53,000 a year. How do you, 800,000? It should be, you know, 175K. You could get the house. Like, there's just, it, and again.
The least of worries, by the way.
Right. But the price of a house is a big deal for the Ginas and the Olgas and the whoever's thinking about buying Matt Fondalier, whoever. Uh, the fact that gas is five bucks a gallon is brutal in a place where I have to drive everywhere. Again, it doesn't really affect me, but it does affect others who don't make as much as me. And I don't see why we can't go, now, get rid of Newsome. But I was also thinking of that. The one thing about California is like California is just blue and we just vote Democrat. So he's a Democrat and the other guy's not. So, fine. But then I was sort of thinking about it. You know, JFK is always at the top of everyone, the Mount Rushmore of, uh, everyone's presidents. Everyone loved JFK.
Except for Mount Rushmore.
He is, he's on the mount, he's on the Mount Rushmore of presidents, except he's not on the Mount. He is, he's on the mount, he's on the Mount Rushmore of presidents, except he's not on the Mount Rushmore. Right. He's a Michael Jordan of presidents. Right. But and so Republicans like JFK too. Everyone liked JFK. He's JFK. He's like a great president. And then you go, you look at Lincoln. Lincoln was a Republican. Everyone loves Lincoln, you know, he's a Republican Democrat. Isn't, can we just get a little more back to the man? You know what I mean? Like, like.
Be awesome.
All right. So California, what if you had your choice between Gavin Newsom and Abe Lincoln? Would you go fucking voting Democrat?
Today? Cause Lincoln wouldn't be doing so well. Now, of course, Lincoln, yeah, anyone in their right mind.
I'm saying, if you think Lincoln would do better, just vote for him. Ignore, ignore the party at this point. We gotta save, we gotta save the state. So I was listening to Larry Elder's been on the show a few times, uh, black conservative talk show host, but a spitfire for stats and statistics and knows how to talk. He's a talk show host. And uh, he's out there campaigning and uh, hopefully he'll win, but.
You think there's a real chance?
I, I look. First off, let's really just examine experts for a second. You know what I mean? Donald Trump didn't stand a fucking chance in 2016 by everybody's, every expert was like, no fucking way. They were as great as fear, but they never, there's a killer, you want. All the press conferences I see on Afghanistan are generals, presidents and you know, heads of this, that. And they're like, we didn't anticipate any, we had a one year timeline. We trunched, crunched all the data. We went to the hut, the chief of staff, the highest general, the four star, whatever. They didn't know. What are the experts anymore? If nobody really can anticipate anything or prognosticate or figure anything out, who the fuck could even say, oh, he's gonna do this or he's not gonna do that? I honestly have no idea. I would, I would hope that my, my first order business is it'd be great just to get rid of Gavin Newsom. The second would be replace him with Larry Elder. And the third would be with one of those plastic owls that's on the sign at the seafood restaurant. So the seagulls don't shit on it. That would be a great step toward the light for me.
If Larry Elder did win, you would be within a small reach of actually becoming traffic czar.
Oh, yes. A traffic czar. We could have a traffic czar.
I just reconsidered my vote.
Yeah, me too.
So uh, but I was thinking, all right, so I was listening to Larry Elder laying out some of his stuff. And I thought, here's basically the, the contrast in Gavin Newsom and Larry Elder. And I thought, well, I'll play you 57 seconds of him on this show a million years ago, bringing up a big problem, which is access to checking accounts for blacks and Hispanics. And we'll see Newsom's approach to problem solving and we'll play that clip now to.
Half of African Americans in the state of California, roughly half of Latino families have no access to a checking account or an ATM, things we take for granted. They don't have a check.
What's wrong with them?
And what, but what, well, because they don't, they don't have the resources to sock those things away.
Why do we have them?
A lot of different reasons, but, but roughly half those families don't.
Why do Armenians have them?
But where they end up is the check cashing places.
But I want to know why those groups, why those two groups don't have access.
And a lot of, it just happens to be that we can talk about.
Flawed?
No, they're hardly flawed, but they're struggling. Folks are making their word hardly, not absolutely.
Okay, so but do Asians have this problem?
I mean, a lot of communities have, a lot of whites have these problems.
Oh, so that's not just black and Hispanic?
No, but it, but.
But why'd you bring up black and Hispanic?
Because the magnitude is ominous.
But why so many of them?
It just happens to be.
But just that's the way God planned it?
Not at all.
Well, what happened to them?
There are a lot of issues and that the communities are struggling, a lot of new immigrants, a lot, a lot of different reasons.
Oh, boy. You exhausted him.
I'm a dick, but fine. No one ever fucking takes that guy to the woodshed and beats his ass up. But look, he brought up the problem. So now tell us, first off, he's lying. Half, half 50% of black and Hispanic don't have access? Now, think about using the word access. You say, don't have access to checking accounts and you go, oh, Jesus Christ, this is a problem. We gotta fix this.
Give them checking accounts.
Right. But what if you said what it really was? Half don't care to get a checking account. Then you go, well, fuck them or go get one or go fuck, fucking fix it yourself. They don't have access. There's a bank on every fucking corner. You do it on your phone now, but all right. That's Gavin Newsom and his problem solving. He just didn't know. It was like, they don't have it. He's gonna state it, but he has no clear path to rectifying it. And then uh, I'll just, I just grabbed a random 58 seconds of Larry Elder on Dennis prayer. But just you can hear the slight difference in uh, in cadence and tone when it comes to problem solving.
75% of black boys dentists cannot read at state levels of proficiency in California and those levels are not high. Half of third graders cannot, and they were denied a whole year of in-person education. And they were already behind near the bottom of the 40, of the 50 states in areas like reading and uh, and math.
What sustains him? Union money?
Union money, uh, the public sector money in general. Uh, the teachers are the largest funder of Gavin Newsom. And by the way, you and I are in Los Angeles, the largest affiliate of the California Teachers Union is United Teachers of Los Angeles. Uh, and they were adamant about not going back to in-school learning. And one of their demands for going back was single payer. Another demand was defund the police. What it has to do with K through 12 is beyond me. And there's been a study that looked at where public school teachers sent their own school age kids dentists. They are way more likely to put their own school age kids in private schools compared to households that do not have public school teachers. It's insulting.
So he's spitting out data. He, look, who the fuck knows if he would fix anything? At least he's saying what I want to fix and, and he wants to do school choice and all that kind of shit. But anyway, uh, I just love listening to Gavin Newsom go in a fucking circle. It's insane. Now, I don't know where you guys stand, but my deal is, is if it comes down to two folks, this thing where it's like Larry Elder would love to debate Gavin Newsom because he would deny, he would annihilate Gavin Newsom. Gavin Newsom will never debate Larry Elder, which by the way, you shouldn't vote for him then. If you won't get up on fucking stage and state your intentions against somebody who's formidable, not the fucking LA Times, but someone has a different opinion than you and you cannot articulate those opinions, then you shouldn't. But he'll just opt out. He shouldn't be able to opt out. He should go, all right, we're having a debate. You must debate. We're gonna go debate. Here's the date. Here's the stage. If you don't want to show up, then it'll be a one hour for Larry Elder or whatever, but fucking go debate him then. Take all your great ideas and go call the black guy a racist to his face.
Isn't that what happened with Biden? Didn't he do like a town hall when Trump?
It's on the calendar. If you don't want to show up, then you'll give the other guy a full hour.
I think everyone would like to see that. I don't think that's partisan. I'd like to see that.
Well, anyone who was gonna vote would go, all right, here's the subject. Go ahead, argue it out. All right, Gina, we got eat your feelings.
Sponsored by Home Chef. Yes. By the way, the other thing that son of a bitch Vinnie has me doing now is poking my finger to do glucose and ketone levels with like the diabetes needle. Ooh, I hate it. I hate it. Um, so this is from Home Chef. They sent me a pecan and parsley crusted chicken recipe with these um, spiced carrots. And I, again, I'm the one who goes to the grocery store. I'm the one who organizes all this shit. I cut, I peel, I stack. It is so nice, really, just to have everything in a bag already portioned for you. But like, I get to do this with the kid. We have fun. Also, I'm a really visual person and I have now taken a hard stance on no longer following recipes that don't have pictures. I got to see along the way what's happening. Very visual. Thank you. And thank God they have really, really clear pictures that I, I really like. Now, uh, we have a picture of theirs and mine.
I don't know which one is which.
Thank you. Mine's on top. I butterflied. I, it's a chicken breast. I butterflied it just to give a little more surface area to the pecans. Just because that's kind of what I'm about. But yeah, that's, you know, it very easy to make it like they do on the picture.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Were the pecans pre-seasoned or did you have to do it yourself?
Everything is just, just plain raw. And then I added what they told me to add, the parsley, the salt, the pepper, the olive oil. You mix it together. You put a little mustard on the chicken. You press it down really hard. Away it goes into the oven. See you later. I'm doing the carrots as uh, that's cooking. And it was really, truly very easy. But my favorite part is, see that delicious brown puddle under the chicken?
Yes.
That's a demi gloss. Now, I don't tend to mess with demi glosses too much because I'm intimidated by them. But I'm really glad this, and we ate it for dinner last night. Andy says the, the sauce, the demi gloss kind of has that ajou, French dip.
Wait, is that word glaze or gla?
Pronounced gloss.
Oh, they call it demi gloss.
And I'm gonna tell you exactly, yes, I'm gonna tell you exactly what it means. It's a rich, dark sauce made by combining half brown stock and half brown sauce. That's called Espanol sauce. And then reducing that by half. So it's, it's uh, the, the, a packet of it, basically it comes in, you add water, you add butter, you let it boil, you add a little mustard, and then it's just this beautiful, thick, rich gloss, demi glaze that, that goes under or over the chicken. And um, they just, they walk me through it. This is not something I would have thought to make and it was uh, it felt healthy. It felt uh, you know, it was fun to have that crunchy texture. What do you guys think?
It's really good. I've been eating it the whole time.
Yeah, the pecans are such a good, that's why I asked about if they're pre-seasoned.
No, I, that's Chef Gina.
Delicious. Pecans are underrated. Should be on more things.
Absolutely. Anything nut crusted gets my vote.
Pecan is underrated. Everyone loves pecan pie and then we stop somewhere at pecan pie. And I don't know why it's not on more stuff because this is good.
Oh, good. And remember last year for Christmas, I made pecan butter because what's better? It's like better than peanut butter. So uh, thank you, Home Chef, for letting me do this. And you can go, I guess, just to homechef.com and check it out yourself.
Thank you. Well, we're gonna bring Joe Busciano in.
This will be interesting.
He's a former police officer, running for mayor. Um, I want to talk to him about that. Also, he's a, he's a paisan.
How could you tell?
And uh, he wants to, he wants to bring back the San Gennaro fees.
Oh.
I think Joe's been to the, been to a few of the, I don't know, 10 that we had over the, over the years. So we'll talk to him about that and uh, cleaning up this one horse town right after this. Joe Busciano is here, former LAPD officer and hopefully mayor of Los Angeles.
Love you.
On a political role this morning or this afternoon, talking about the governor and the mayor. But uh, it'd be, it'd be nice to right the ship, you know, it's, it's such a weird thing. Like you have the mayor and you have the governor and they're going, eh, we need to right the ship here. And I'm like, who's steering the fucking ship? Yes, we all agree. Why not? So uh, Joe, thanks for bringing the red sauce.
Yes.
That your mom made?
Explain.
Mom and dad. So we have this community garden, these tomatoes we harvested last week and went straight to the backyard because Italians bake sauce in their backyard.
Oh, wow.
And um, sure enough, we bottled the sauce and made about 200 jars. I gave Kimmy one of these at a feast years ago and he looked at it and said, this is, this is a real shit. This is because of the, the color of the sauce.
Then he handed it to his assistant, got into the limousine, did a pile of coke and banged his guma.
Adam, that's for you and the family. And you've got, I mean, farm to table there, real Italian sauce. And it's not gravy. It's sauce on the record.
Well, I know you wanna, you know, wanna be mayor and you also want to bring back the San Gennaro feast. But I always say, I always think about the San Gennaro feast because we always kind of talk about who's effective, who's not effective, who, you know, you want to get something done, give it to a busy guy. You know, the thing that's crazy, it's like Jimmy Kimmel, Mark Garros is the do busiest human beings in the world. Also, the two people get the shit done the fastest. You call, you call Mark Garros, he calls you back 10 seconds later, he carves out whatever. I was just sitting in New York with Jimmy and he's like, we're in Little Italy and he's like, piece of San Gennaro, we need one of those. And I was like, we do. And then.
What are you gonna do?
What are you gonna do? You can't start a feast alone. You know what I mean? And then we got back to LA and he's like, we're gonna start that feast. I was like, I'm, I'm whatever you want. I'm, I'm, I'm over here. And the next thing you know, we're having a feast. But what you can do or you, you know, no one in my family could do that in 7,000 lifetimes. And Jimmy does it in one weekend. And what's so different about him? You know, it's just one person does stuff and the other doesn't.
It's in our DNA. We lead with urgency. We like to get things done. And uh, the feast, thanks to you and Jimmy, we're able to support LAPD youth programs. So I got involved with Aunt Patenza and Doug DeLuca, who says hello, by the way. You know, for us, um, as the only.
And it's Jimmy's cousin and Doug is from the Mancha.
Right. And uh, we had a, uh, because I'm the only Italian American on the council, son of Italian immigrants. I said, you know, we need to re-establish a Little Italy in LA. And we did in San Pedro, the largest Italian community in all of LA, 30,000 strong.
Largest Italian community in LA?
We, we don't leave. It's the fishing industry. Mom and dad came.
That's why they came here, right?
Correct. In the late 60s. So we have established a Little Italy. Now, listen, it, it's no, um, um, you know, San Diego or New York, but we're, we're moving on. We're establishing the piazza and already four great Italian restaurants have moved in.
Well, I don't want to tell you how to run your campaign, but I would say my first piece of business as mayor is Alvera Street. You had a hell of a run, but you're out. It's now Little Italy Street. We don't need another drag full of Mexicans in the middle of Los Angeles. Go down to Pacoima. That is all of Alvera Street.
Gender vacation is a tough topic.
Go down to Sherman Wayne Roscoe. You got your Alvera Street.
This is not helping.
We need Little Italy and we need this fine piece of highway that ends with Felipe's.
Joe, I'm trying to get elected here again.
I'll take your advisement.
Tried to get elected.
Don't do it by force. Do it by decree.
We are model United Nations in Los Angeles, Adam.
And Little Ethiopia, you better look over your shoulder. It's coming for you.
Don't forget Filipino town in Little Armenia.
Eh, yeah, I don't know. Armenians. Why? You want to throw a rock at that hornet's nest?
No, I do not.
I do not. You want to see a bunch of guys driving around with the flags on their car? Okay, don't do it. And then Garros says sue your ass to kingdom come.
A lot of smoking at coffee bean.
Don't leave him alone. Drop off a case of Axe and some Winstons and just keep walking.
Well, I'm making an executive, because of, of your Italian roots, I'm making an executive decision on this show. This is not scripted. I just decided this, Gina, that we're gonna honor Adam Corolla in our annual October Italian American Heritage Month celebration.
Symbolic shit. We need to make him traffic czar. Come on, man.
Well, let's talk about traffic czar. I'm so, I'm so glad you brought that up because yesterday, no, today.
Joe, I don't know if you noticed, traffic's a big problem in this city.
Traffic's a big problem today. All right. So here's, here's what I did today. And I mean, we haven't heard all, we've heard of some, but not all. We have a problem with traffic in Los Angeles and, and then I get the logistics. Like, well, you're gonna put a second story on the 405 or we're gonna build it, we're gonna get Elon to tunnel through the pass or whatever it is. It's like, we could move traffic 20% faster if we could get people to wake the fuck up. So I was driving down Sunset. I don't know if you can find it, Maxipata, but if you go down Sunset, it tees into PCH. Just makes a T.
All the way down.
Go all the way down Sunset, it will eventually die into PCH.
Yes.
You may turn right because there's a lane there for you to turn right that then has arrows saying merge.
Sure.
So you may turn right and you may merge. Now, it doesn't matter how much traffic's coming down PCH. You can turn right because you have your own lane.
Let me guess, people stop and wait.
They stop and they won't move. Now, because I'm me, I'm driving down Sunset today. I see four lemmings just sitting there waiting because the light's red and they don't know they can merge. So I do what I do. I turn into the Chevron station, go around everyone and pop out into the lane with the arrows saying merge. While that asshole still sits back there because there's no goddamn sign. Because they don't know and LAPD is so overfishous with their ticket riding and everyone is so scared shitless that they just sit there and go, I'm uh, I'm gonna wait this one out. They could be woken up. We could let them know. You could turn right on red. We could let them know a million things, zero. We don't have a traffic czar. They have a traffic czar in like Montreal or was it? A lot of cities. It's like.
I think in Dakota.
Dakota, they, they have traffic czars everywhere. If you go forward on this.
Yeah, it's going north.
You will see, you can, you can turn north and there is an entire. You will see, you can, you can turn north and there is an entire lane that is dedicated. That's the gas station I drive through. Because I already know the idiots aren't going to, aren't going to do it. And there's a lane with arrows that will let you merge, but nobody turns because they have no goddamn idea. They can do it or they're scared or the light's red and I ain't budging. There could be a sign there saying turn on red or merge or anything. No goddamn sign. We got to click at a fucking ticket every 10 feet, but we don't have this. So we could get the city moving if we just had someone cracking the whip a little bit. Sorry.
Passion, Adam. And as, as mayor, my first appointment is going to be Adam Crowell, my deputy mayor of transportation.
Now, we're cooking with gas. Yeah, don't, don't play with our emotions.
This is when real people talking about real solutions because they're in traffic. I mean, there's talk about subway down the 405 that may be advancing through metro. Um, the goal is to get people out of their cars and actually work where they live. Like we're doing in my district down in San Pedro, creating this, these commercial hubs where, you know, it's 15 minute rule, you know, you want to walk, live and work in a neighborhood. So you don't have to drive downtown to get to work.
What's Garcetti's status now? We're hopefully ship, shipping him off to Bombay.
Turn his rupp.
But when does he move or what's going on?
So um, President Biden advanced and nominated him and now that's, that nomination has got to go through the Foreign Relations Committee Committee in, in the Senate. As we know, the Senate doesn't move quick. So we're anticipating a hearing in the coming month or two. And by the end of this year, uh, we are anticipating uh, a, an appointment to the ambassador to India.
And there's nobody who's not rooting for him. Whether you like him or you don't like him, everybody's rooting for him to get this position.
I know he was looking forward to this appointment.
Oh, good.
I know he was looking forward to this appointment.
Reminiscent of when Rachel Perry was doing the news on my morning show and she's like, I just need two weeks off to shoot a sci-fi on uh, the Fox. I'm like, yeah, yeah, go ahead. Oh, please. There's the parking lot. Keep walking.
But then we have to make an appointment. The city council, through the city charter, has got to either make two choices. Make an appointment, a caretaker, or call for a special election. As we know, the election, I'm running for mayor, joebusciano.com. The election's next June. However, it's going to take eight votes to appoint a caretaker. Now, I'm supportive of the caretaker.
The caretaker is like the interim.
Mayor Pro Tem or something.
Cuomo is, yeah, coming in.
As you know, right? I hope not, no.
No, but the uh.
The same.
Ms. Hokel or whatever her name is.
Right. So uh, the interim uh, mayor will serve uh, for the remainder of Garcetti's term, which is next December. But it's going to, I'm hopeful, my, my position on this is to make sure that the interim mayor does not run for mayor because he or she will have the upper hand. And I nominate Adam Carolla as the interim mayor of Los Angeles.
Be careful what you ask for.
We need eight votes.
I will, I will fucking kick ass and take names.
As long as you don't run for mayor.
I won't. This city.
Got enough to do.
First off, I will be assassinated my first four to seven weeks in office. I will be taken down day to jackal style because I will have, I will piss everyone off because this city is run so horribly. And first things first, garbage everywhere.
Yep.
There's just trash. Like I don't, I don't know how you can say, well, we run an effective city. Like, you know, the schools and the transportation and the police force and the thing, crime, whatever, and they have garbage everywhere. I, I don't feel like those two things can exist. It's like you cannot, you, if you see someone driving down the street and they got the uh, Toyota Tercel and there's newspapers piled up and everything. It's like, that guy's one of our best employees. Like, no, he's not. No, he can't. You can't be both. You can't be a well-run city and have garbage everywhere in your city and everywhere you look. And by the way, this is pre-homeless. Now, the homeless situation has taken garbage and fed it creatine. Like it's now, you have little, you have little villages and folks dragging the garbage out in the street, but it used to just be graffiti, garbage, just, just sort of everywhere, which is, seems fixable. It seems like insanely fixable, you know? It's just like, give everyone a jurisdiction. Like I'm always, I'm always marveling at this stretch of the five freeway with the weeds and garbage everywhere and just stuff. Can we get Bette Midler and put her in charge of a quarter mile of this shit? And, and figure out how to do it. Like, I'll, I'll give you an example. This popped in my head. I have uh, good friends with uh, Galpin Ford and the Ford family, Bo Bachmann and all those guys. They got, they got acreage over there out in Van Nuys off the, off the 405.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Uh, you go down to the 405 and uh, you get off on um, on Roscoe and it's a goddamn shit show over there. It's a, it's a shit show, but not the off-ramp that goes to Galpin because they like adopted that off-ramp and they pay two guys 11 bucks an hour, three days a week to go out there and hose something down and pull a weed and pick up some garbage. So it's a little, as you pull off to go to Galpin Ford, it's nice looking there. You go to the next off-ramp, it's a total shit show with weeds over your head and garbage everywhere. Can't just figure that part out. It escapes us. What do we need? A computer? Like, what, what is it? Why is it such a shit show?
And why I'm running for mayor, Adam. I too believe that we need to do better. And I, I can tell you, yes, as a legislator, a council member, I too have been frustrated by going through the committee process, going back to being Italian. We like to get shit done and get it done quickly. What I've done is actually, I've hired nonprofits to pick up trash. I want to do this citywide. We need a thousand foot soldiers, mobilize 600 per council district to do the basics. Remember the basics. And if we don't, as the public safety candidate, you know, the, the whole broken window theory, that if you don't fix the smallest of things, you're going to see prostitution, gang activity, more graffiti. It's the basic. Those are my experiences as a street cop patrolling the city of Los Angeles. And what we've seen also in New York, you know, with um, with, with the mayoral candidate there, Eric Adams, it's possible to elect a police officer here in Los Angeles because we understand what's happening with homelessness.
Yeah. What, what, what was your beat when you were on the, on the force?
Citywide. Actually, I've spent the last seven years in my own hometown. We need more cops patrolling their own hometown. In fact, my own residents uh, decided to appoint or elect me to represent them in city hall. And, and it is possible because we know that crime today, we haven't seen these crime numbers, particularly in our black and brown communities. The, the largest number of crime that we've seen in 10 years. It's happening.
When you were in the academy, did they teach you extra cop talk? Okay, what I need you to do for me right now, just go ahead. Okay, sir, what I need you to do right now for me, okay, right now? Just go ahead, get your license registration, okay, right now for me, sir. They must have a class in that. It's impossible that they all do extra cop talk.
Definitely was not a learning.
Was not taught. They tell you not to talk about it.
Not a learning.
Okay, sir, what I'm going to go ahead and ask you to do for me right now, okay? Just say license and registration, okay, right now? You're taught to do that so people don't talk back, right? You filibuster, right? You don't want to go, oh, no one's robbing a bank or anything. You go, but as long as you're talking, they're just sitting there, right? There's no extra cop talk class?
No, not at all.
Not right now, sir? Okay, what do you need to do? Go ahead and be honest with me right now, okay, right now? Uh, I'm going to go ahead and ask you to go ahead and turn around for me, okay, right now?
No, that's not the, that's not the lingo. Sorry, Adam.
Oh, I know cop talk. I've been let out of my last 20 tickets, which is uh, awesome.
It's impressive.
Yeah. I argued with someone about this today. If you pull someone over and you let them off a ticket and then you pull that person over again, are they for sure getting a ticket?
Oh, you, you don't keep track. You don't keep track.
Notable.
Cable star.
You don't keep track.
Okay.
So what is, yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Joe, I was looking, I was doing research, looking at your bio and it says there, it says you're, you're a Democrat and it made me think, how important, if at all, is it important for a political party, one or the other, in a local election like mayor? And now, obviously a national election, big, big difference, state elections, but when you're talking about like, just like a city mayor and it says it's bigger than Los Angeles, I imagine it would just be best person for like, does political party maybe make a difference?
That's a nonpartisan race. And I've always said, you know, when you call 911, the dispatcher doesn't ask, are you a Republican or a Democrat? A pothole's not a D or an R issue. It, it's just a quality of life. Um, as I say, all politics, local politics are, 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 all politics are local. Happens on the ground. And as mayor, I'm going to be the mayor that represents everyone. But I'm concerned, the Democratic Party today, and what we're seeing in this homeless crisis, is the, the far extreme left, the DSA, the socialists who protest my house and protest me cleaning our encampments and connecting people to services are completely out of touch.
Oh, that's my follow-up question then is how, I, I imagine all of the Democrats and all the Republicans and everyone who's been mayor has had great intentions, but they've run up against the city council or the committees or whatever. What can you do to work with them around that? What are you going to do to get things done? Whereas others have failed in the past.
I, I, I um, come to my district. If you come to my district today, uh, I represent Watts, Harbor City, Harbor Gateway and San Pedro, um, and in Wilmington, is that you're not going to find a large, unregulated, dangerous encampments because I've cleaned our streets, connected people to services. We have to have both. And also arrested the bad guys who are providing drugs and the gangsters who were um, paying rent for folks staying on our sidewalks. That's the message that's, I'm going to, and the vision for my, my city.
Oh, they were getting them to pay them?
Yes.
Oh, boy.
Paying rent. Correct.
Paying rent for living on the sidewalk.
Correct.
But that's going to be a complicating factor for LA. The problems in Watts are very different. The problems in, I don't know, Santa Monica, you know what I mean? There's some crossover, but you're talking about different cities almost.
But Brian, as the chief executive of the city, I'm going to appoint a police chief that shares my vision. I'm going to appoint, appoint general managers like Adam Carolla that share my vision.
Traffic czar.
Especially on traffic. It's, it's that chief executive position, Gina, that I, I will be able to bring the right people in place, demand answers, get things done and move quickly on it.
What happened to, what's Garcetti? I cannot, most, you know, I, I'm, I'm the reason I can't find words here because I, I'm confused. I'm confused by him. I'm, I'm sort of like, why is he not saying, here's what I'm going to do or this needs to stop or whatever? He's kind of, he's so like touchy feely and it's like, when these prisoners are released, they owe us a debt of gratitude.
We owe them.
We owe them a debt of gratitude, right? Sorry.
Very important decision.
To their tent. Yeah. And stuff like that. Like I, I don't feel like I hear any nuts and bolts coming out of him. What?
Yeah. Different, different style leadership.
Ooh, leadership.
I'm, I'm just um, yeah, the.
But why, he's not effective or something. Or is it the city councils? Like, why can't we get our shit together? Why is it, look?
Different lived experiences too, Adam. It's like, listen, for me, I was a street cop. I, I know poverty. I've responded to my, my, my wife's 14-year-old student who was shot up by gangs. Okay. I understand what's happening on the ground level. Eric, visionary. Brought the Olympics here. Brought the Olympics here.
He went to ride a unicorn somewhere.
You know, brought the, you may disagree, that's fine. Brought the Olympics here, moved on transportation projects, moved on the rail line. I'm not going to, I'm not going to bash him, but I can tell you, I'll be a lot different.
Well, I was talking to someone today and we're talking about doing a comedy show in Hollywood. And they said, uh, oh, I had to go down to uh, Hollywood and Wilcox and do a show last night. And then she said, oh, such a shit show down there. And I was like, yeah, I wouldn't go near Hollywood. And then it's kind of like, it's Hollywood. And I said, Hollywood is known worldwide. Like everyone, everyone knows Hollywood. Hollywood is a shit show. I, I mean, it is dicey and weird. I've done comedy shows down there. You would not want to walk down Hollywood Boulevard with the streetlights on.
People will like tell, like tweet us, like, oh, come to Hollywood for the first time in LA. I want to see Hollywood. It's like, don't, don't waste your time.
Yeah.
We can't.
Where do I stay?
Can't get Hollywood together?
And I've said that to, to these guys before, I'm getting married next month and I have all these out of towners coming in and, oh my God, you know, this is a destination city. I am embarrassed. I am pre-embarrassed for them to get here. And all the hotels and all the places they're sending me, I'm like, I wouldn't stay in that neighborhood. And I just, I feel responsible for it and it's really um, dehumanizing.
I can tell you, not only Hollywood, but Venice has been a disaster.
Oh, my God.
I mean, I tell you, you know, homelessness has been a tax on our, our business. It's been a tax on our tourism. I'm one of 15 council members and my, my, my colleagues don't agree with me that we need to have consequences when people on the streets are offered shelter and they refuse to go in. Okay, that's called enabling.
Sure.
That's called enabling. We're allowing people to destroy themselves. The mental health laws in California are failing those folks who are not in the right mind frame to say yes to help.
Doctor Drew agrees.
Compassion. I, I spoke to Drew and he told me, don't, don't ever disagree with Adam Carolla before you go on the show. But Drew and I have, and we're talking the same language here. We need to redefine gravely disabled, but at the same time, if we don't have, by the way, last, we have over a thousand beds available last night in LA. A thousand beds available. Okay, you have this governance structure that's called LA Homeless Services Authority that is a failure. I'm calling to, to end it because they're not giving us real-time data on who says yes to help, who says no to help. And, and we need that data, that information to know who we're helping and who we're not helping.
Well, is there, tell me if this is the phenomenon or the sort of new world order we're living in and if this is what's happening. Because it feels, I feel this way. So I'll set, I'll set you an example. Uh, we have five bloviating nudniks that are trying to push the term Latinx. You ask all Latins, would you want to be called Latinx? They go, no. But there's five white Karens that want Latinx. So now we have to discuss this, you know what I mean? It's got to be a thing and we got to argue over it and it's got to be official and other things. Nobody, Latino people don't give a two shits about Latinos. They don't like Latinx, but yet it's sort of forced on us. And I feel like with the homeless, it's like a couple of city council members, feckless, worthless city council members, and then a small group of homeless advocates, whatever the fuck that means, idiots who've anointed themselves experts in homelessness. And then there's the entire rest of society. And the entire rest of society, once these people move, they want them to get help. They want the same thing you want. You want a shelter. If you can't get a shelter, then we got to put you somewhere else. We got to get you cleaned up. We got to get you help and mental service. That's what everyone wants. And there's like five people that are saying, no, you got to say Latinx. And then the rest of us going, oh, Bob, maybe they know something or something. How do we get these people out of here? It's not the homeless people. Everyone's like, how do we get the homeless people? How do we get the five assholes that are the advocates in the LA city council that are ruining this whole thing for everyone? The homeless are just homeless. They're going to do what we let them do. It's the, it's the sober people that make the horrible decisions that make, that exacerbates the problem. It gets worse month in and month out and they keep their jobs? Can someone tell them to shut the fuck up? The adults are taking over? Go.
That's why I'm running for mayor. And I just found my campaign manager, ladies and gentlemen. You're hired, Adam. Listen, just this week, I'm ma- I'm making a proposal, a sensible, common sense proposal that will ban encampments next to schools, next to schools.
How dare you?
So these folks that you're talking about came to this press conference and were shouting me down the whole time. They, they oppose you know, they oppose my ordinance that want to ban encampments next to schools.
Right. But it's such a small minority of the populace who agrees with those people. Somehow they, someone gave them all bull horns and bully pulpits and the rest of us are hanging around thinking that that's the way the wind is blowing. It's not. It's the same with Latinx. Like no, nobody thinks that way except for five people, but they get the bull horns.
We lost sense of common sense. That's why I'm running, joebusciano.com. Come on board. I need you so we can fight back.
All right. But I want to be in charge of traffic.
Deputy mayor of transportation, ladies and gentlemen.
And those, those uh, electric free freeway billboard signs, they, they do text. Can they do images? Can they have me like a cowboy outfit holding the six shooter down? Everyone going, shake your ass.
So inappropriate.
Dance.
Dance.
So inappropriate.
Yeah, but it would work. It would be super effective. All right, Joe. I won't ruin any more of your campaign. Let me hit sleeper here. Modern fantasy experience designed to connect people over sports with integrated chat and a sleek interface. Sleeper users talk more to their league mates. Fantasy, NFL, NBA, even LCS League of uh, League of Legends. Free, by the way, zero ads, genuinely a premium experience. Total control over your fantasy draft and season, redraft as well. Dynasty best ball sleeper. Play fantasy sports your way. Brian is uh, over the moon about sleeper.
Sleeper's the real deal, man. All of us fantasy football enthusiasts, like no sleeper. When you're like, oh, sleeper's a sponsor. Like sleeper, I love sleeper.
Fastest growing fantasy platform. There you go. Millions of users built almost entirely on word of mouth. Available at the App Store, Google Play or on your desktop. Download the Sleeper app and start playing today. Joe, uh, from just godspeed is all, all I have to say.
Thanks, Adam.
What's the timeline? Like, when, when do we know? You know what I mean?
So I'm out early. I have to be because I'm up against the political establishment. These folks, my potential opponents have been in office over 20 years. Um, remember I came from the street working as a police officer. So the, the election's next June. That's why I'm out early. Got to raise, raise some money to get my, my name out. And as we know, here in LA, the media market is very expensive. And um, got to raise four to $5 million by next June to get my message out and my vision out. Yeah, no shit.
That's your people would say, my own.
And LA Times is going to be torn on you because they're like, he's a Democrat. All right, but he wants to do something about homelessness. Oh. I don't know if we can endorse that. He wants to do things. All right, Joe. that. He wants to do things. All right. Joe BoosKiano. Thanks very much. Thanks for the sauce.
Enjoy. Give the family our love.
We will see you at the, uh, next Angelenaro feast.
This October. We're gonna honor Adam Carolla, October 2nd in San Pedro, Los Angeles. Let's go.
Get the giant skeleton key ready.
Key to the city.
All right. We'll take a quick break back with the news right after this.
Beat news with Gina Grad, stuff they saw TMZ, Joe Biden, Kamala. Beat news with Gina, Gina.
The news with Gina Grad.
Well, we have some breaking news that, uh,
Speaking of breaking, Adam's breaking into the sauce.
Breaking open the jar. Wait, how is it? How is it?
Mm, yeah.
Savory, umami, zesty.
Just fresh tomatoes. Like it's, it's different. It's better.
Joe, you want my vote? Bring back some more of some gravy.
Seriously. Delicious. Um, so yeah, Chris handed me this a few minutes ago and we will definitely keep our eye on it. Uh, this is from TMZ. Blues traveler had a scary moment on its travels. The band's tour bus has crashed on an interstate. Several band members were rushed to the hospital. Um, a rep for the band, uh, tells TMZ their bus crashed this morning in Minnesota on their way to Friday's tour stop. And the crash left everyone inside trapped until law enforcement and first responders arrived. The band was on the way to Rochester, Minnesota. The single vehicle crashed, uh, left everyone shaken while a few, including frontman John Popper, were injured and treated at the hospital. Uh, Minnesota State Police say the tour bus lost control and I-90 crashed into a center median ditch, resulting in non-life threatening, uh, injuries for three passengers. John was live posting about the crash on Facebook, saying he injured his ribs and another bandmate suffered a dislocated shoulder.
He saw squirrels on the bus.
Yeah.
Wanted to get it.
Shot at it.
Yeah.
Me and Chris were just talking to John on the way out
Oh, boy.
To Pebble Beach. Um, God, less than a week ago or right around, yeah, right around a week ago.
I would imagine a cracked rib is bad for singing and harmonica playing.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of breathing. Yes.
Yeah. Harmonica playing with a cracked rib. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I have to, I'll have to check in on him.
You find out. Yeah. You let us know.
Yeah.
Uh, the AP reports that a man who claimed to have a bomb in a pickup truck near the Capitol surrendered to law enforcement after this hours long standoff. It's like five hours today if we record this.
Hold on, Max Pata, give me my phone. If you give my phone, I'll, I'll send a text to John. We'll see, see what he replies.
Go right to the top.
He was happy to tell me that, uh, they had the number one blues album in, uh, in the United States. It's the last album. Yeah.
Good. Um, so police didn't immediately know whether this guy really had explosives today, uh, but authorities were searching the truck in an effort to understand what led this guy, 49 year old Floyd Ray Roseberry of North Carolina, to drive onto the sidewalk outside the Library of Congress and start making these bomb threats. Uh, the police continued these negotiations. Video surfaced of this guy on Facebook Live. It was like a half hour long. I'll have a little clip for you. He was threatening explosions, making anti-government threats, talking about what he believes are the ills of the country, uh, position on Afghanistan, healthcare, the military. He said Democrats need to step down, but he also loves the president, Joe Biden. He just wants to talk to him. Um, here's a, less than a minute of the clip from the original Facebook Live video.
Cause I'm a patriot. I love this land. I've died for this land. Cause my grandbabies gonna have the rights I had. Any of you other fuckers out there, any of you other patriots, y'all motherfuckers sitting at home, sitting on the couch, got there fishing, playing the golf. I don't wanna see no more fucking videos, patriots, this time. This motherfucker, the revolution's on. It's on. And I don't stand here alone, Joe. If you take me out, you'll never know where them other four are until they go off. It's gonna be a chain reaction. Don't break my windows. Send somebody up here to talk to me.
This is Andy's worth of video.
Yeah, I'm gonna unfollow him on YouTube. Uh, I'm always, everyone always, always talks about like how insane we are as a country, but I'm always surprised that there's as little of this as there is considering like you go, well, everyone's got a gun. I mean, there's like 330 million people and 350 million guns and everyone's on medication and everyone's having fistfights and commercial airline
Yep.
flights now.
Everyone's got a phone.
Kind of surprised that, and everyone's, you know, weaponized with the government and all that kind of stuff. There's, there's remarkably little sort of ram the van into the Capitol fence kind of stuff or even like the White House. You know what I mean? Like if you just went, look, half this country's nuts. There's the White House. Seems like every third day someone would be trying to fly a Cessna into it or drive a van, you know, through the front gate or something. It's, it's, it's kind of rare considering how nutty and medicated everyone is.
Yeah. This is the exception that proves the rule.
Mm-hmm.
And it's interesting because this guy, I mean, the video was over a half hour and he's talking about, there was like some stuff about his wife or his ex-wife's like medical bills. I think she may have been a cancer patient. He's, he's overcome, overwhelmed with these bills. He's never gonna get out underneath. And I, unclear whether he really had a bomb. He had like, he was talking about like a bunch of change and a roll of nickels and like, you know, he was holding this like kind of rusty looking tin thing. Um, but so far nobody knows if that was anything. I look at that man's face and I just see desperation.
He doesn't seem well.
Yeah. But usually it's like, they're kind of easy to make fun of and it's a punchline. Okay. You know, whack job. But I watched a lot of this video and he just, I mean, not that he seems well, but he seems desperate.
I miss old, remember when old Nutty was like Anna Nicole Smith?
Yeah.
That used to be our old like clinically insane person.
You like my body?
Yeah. We'd all have a nice laugh about it before they OD.
That's funny. Yeah. That was the turn, that was a, a turning point. Like, oh, how funny she is. She has the reality show. She's so hot of it. Oh, she's dead. Yeah. Oh, not so funny now.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Now they've amped it up. Well, you mentioned.
I love that show, by the way.
It was a great show.
What was it called?
On the red, no, the red carpet or?
Wait, her show?
Yeah. Anna Nicole Smith or Anna Nicole Smith is something.
Chasing Anna or something like that.
Hmm.
It does feel like a lifetime ago that she was even around. Uh, you mentioned, uh, fights in the air and I'm glad you did because CNN reports that federal authorities are proposing more than a half million dollars in new fines against commercial airline passengers, uh, who've refused to wear masks, hit flight attendants, threw luggage across the cabin. The FAA's announcement of more than a half million dollars in fines is against 34 passengers accused of being unruly. So federal documents show that nine of the 34 involve a passenger accused of touching or hitting a person on a plane, including crew members, and half the incidents involve, uh, flights to or from Florida. The FAA, the Flight Attendants Union would like to see harsher punishments, but the FAA says we, we don't do criminal charges. So we can't help you there.
Really?
That's what they said.
You know, I, it strikes me like when I was in junior high, you'd have the kids get out of, some kid would get out of hand, but we didn't have to turn the classroom around and go back to wherever we're from. You know, the bummer of the airplane is you can't just kick the person off. You gotta turn it around.
Everybody pays.
And go somewhere that every, no one wants to go to. And I don't know, like, do you think, do you think airlines, is there gonna be this with airlines? Like, um, you know, you take accommodations, like, okay, so you, you have airlines and then you have the destination of the hotel or wherever you might go to on your airline when you're, when you're traveling. And we, we all understand that if you want to go to Vegas and you want to go down to the end of the strip and hang out, it's lots of fun. There's gonna be a different clientele there.
Different vibe.
And there may be some action in the casino that you didn't want, you know, there can be some drunken people getting into it and that, that kind of thing. But we all understand that if you go book a meal at Mr. Chow's, it's Caesar's Palace. It's gonna be completely different world. And is that, you know, we got Frontier Airlines and Southwest and stuff like that.
Sun country.
It's sun country. Is something gonna emerge domestically where you go, it's got a dress code. This is the clientele. You're paying a little extra, but they're never turning that plane around.
That's a good idea.
They, I mean, they have Jet Sweet X. They have another competitor. I think it's all Aero or Aero, like.
Jet Sweet X is awesome and perfect, but they're real limited.
Yes. As is Aero, I think is what it's called, but it's also very limited. And there's one that does like exclusively first class. It's like a thousand dollars a ticket, uh, cause you're flying essentially, you know, with a plane with 11 seats, you know, or whatever it is. But you're right, it's limited. It doesn't appeal to a wide audience.
Well, that's a good idea though, because all flying is gen pop now, like in jail.
Right.
Everyone's in the yard. So you're right. The only way to distinguish, it's not gonna be about the stick. It's gonna be the carrot. It's gonna be, hey, come over here, pay another, you know, three, 400 bucks and I promise this won't happen on our flight.
Well, didn't, I mean, wasn't Virgin in jet blue kind of that 15 years ago?
Yeah, they had silverware and cookies.
A little bit better.
Virgin was, that Virgin was literally a step above every other airline.
Brian was the poster boy.
Right.
Fucking loves, I was loyal, I was a loyal member or whatever it was, you know, it had status and then it got absorbed by Alaska. Now it's just another.
Right. So might there be, might there be something for that?
Be nice.
It would be.
Yeah. It was started by Richard Branson. Wouldn't it be great if Elon Musk started an airline?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just you, you paid a little bit more, you got a little bit more and the clientele was not the, but because let's, let's face it, there, there used to be, the division used to be the plane versus the bus.
Yeah. The Greyhound.
What separated the airplane and the Greyhound was from here to Chicago is another 186 bucks to take the airplane. And that difference was enough to keep certain folks on the bus and off of the airplane. Now the Southwest flight is the same. I think the Southwest flight from here to Chicago is cheaper than a bus ticket.
I'll bet you it is.
So now we got, boom.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see. So John wrote back. I wrote, uh, you okay? Heard, uh, about the accident. He wrote, yeah, just bruised to shit.
Oh.
Two exclamation points.
That is breaking news.
Yeah.
Wow. Well, thank you for doing that. My God.
Scoops everyone.
There we go.
Yeah. Did anything happen to Dr. Drew or Jimmy? Cause other than that, I'm out.
Not that I'm aware of.
All right.
All right.
I'm out of celebrities.
Okay. Well, damn. Thanks for that. Uh, Larry David and Alan Dershowitz have got into it. They've made headlines after getting into an argument outside a convenience store on Martha's Vineyard. According to Dershowitz, yeah.
It's just funny that.
It really happened. It's not an episode of Curb.
Uh, like who's the Jewiest?
Yes.
Is it a competition over like who gets to wear the golden yarmulke?
And we're about to find out. Uh, David screamed and yelled at him, according to Dershowitz and that, uh, and it, his face turned red. He even said he was worried Larry was gonna have a stroke. Uh, it seems that somebody from page six wrote down the interaction. Happened to be passing by, saw them fighting, wrote it down as accurately as he could. Once they, they, they confirmed the interaction, the dialogue with Dershowitz who said it happened this way.
Is this, does anyone, uh, I love Larry David, but he's one of these guys who walks, you ever see when a marionette walks?
Yeah.
Their feet are kind of in front of them.
Oh, yeah.
Like when marionettes walk, they're like, I walk, I lean forward like four degrees. His feet are in front. He walks, Ichabod Crane walked that way, but marionettes, whenever they make marionettes walk, their feet are in front of them and they're actually kind of leaning back. It's almost like they're getting up out of a recliner and then walking in that sort of halfway position. He walks like a marionette.
Now I gotta see that.
Find the, find the Vince McMahon meme. I've been walking to the ring.
Oh, yeah. The, the big, yeah, yeah. Well, lucky for you, we actually are going to be able to inter, uh, to reenact this interaction between Alan Dershowitz and Larry David. Um, I believe Brian playing Dershowitz, Dawson playing David. Gentlemen, take it away.
This is Martha's Vineyard?
Martha's Vineyard, outside a convenience store.
They just ran into each other?
It kind of feels like Dershowitz may have been kind of tracking him a little, but unclear. Here we go.
All right.
We can still talk, Larry.
No, no, we really can't. I saw you. I saw you with your arm around Mike Pompeo. It's disgusting.
He's my former student. I greet all my former students that way. I can't greet my former students?
It's disgusting. Your whole enclave. It's disgusting. You're disgusting.
It happened just like that. And at that point, yeah, take a bow, please. At that point, Larry allegedly.
Hold on. I do like when the argument goes from the sort of macro to the micro. Like when they, when they do the thing where they go, uh, it's, you know, they go, it's disgusting. It's disgust, you're disgusting. Like they said, Brad, they go from macro to micro, boom.
Yeah. Larry was pissed. Apparently when he started walking away, Dirt, it, it, it literally feels like an episode of Kira Enthusiasm. Dershowitz rips off his top t-shirt to reveal a t-shirt underneath that says, it's the constitution, stupid.
Wow.
And he's wearing that around Martha's Vineyard. Um, they did confirm the story. Um, but, and by the way, Dershowitz eagerly admitted, they both voted for Biden, Larry David and Alan Dershowitz, but the friendship was severed when he began working for the Trump camp.
Yeah. He's in that, he, he got, he's in the same kind of group that, or he got a little bit, cause I always talked to Garrigus about this, who's, Garrigus is a lifelong Democrat, but you start defending the wrong people and you're, you're out of the tribe.
Define the wrong people.
The wrong.
Pulling out Garrigus?
Yeah. No, I mean, he, you know, he, uh, Dershowitz and, and Garrigus are both very strong believers and everyone needs competent counsel and adequate whatever. And they, they die with that. And.
They've got to know each other.
I'm sure they do. So they defend lots of unpopular people and then people get pissed off and then, uh, then they're out.
Yep.
But, uh, I don't know. There's a kind of a wiring that you have to have to do that because most people couldn't take the scrutiny, you know?
No.
They don't like being ostracized.
And I mean, one of the best examples is the, uh, uh, what's her name? Sarah Paulson, uh, David Schwimmer, everyone who did the, um, OJ series.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that really, that really puts a fine point on things.
Yeah. I was just talking to Garrigus. I don't know why it just popped up, but during the whole Michael Jackson doc, when they
Oh, right.
Cut up.
Franken, yeah.
Franken edited that him and that. It's, it, you gotta be prepared. Most people couldn't take that.
No, that would ruin your life for a while.
Imagine you're just sitting home and you got some guy, you're watching the doc and there's a, there's the victim going, uh, he molested me when I was nine. And then they cut out of context Garrigus going, anybody who comes forward is gonna feel the wrath of God.
We're gonna come down on you like a ton of bricks.
Right. It's like, oh my God. Is, everyone thinks I'm the worst person in the world.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah. By, by the way, just so everyone knows, that's when they, somebody secretly set up a camera in their private jet and him and Michael Jackson were flying and they tried to record it. And this is Garrigus with a young Al Gore. I don't know who's next on. Uh, this is.
A mustachioed Garrigus.
Uh, leaving Neverland. Uh, this is, this is him, uh, saying if anyone sets up another camera, tries to privately tape, secretly tape us, we're gonna come down on them. But.
But that's not what aired.
No.
We will land on you like a ton of bricks. We will land on you like a hammer. If you do anything to besmirch this man's reputation, anything to intrude on his privacy in any way that's actionable, we will unleash illegal court like you've never seen.
Michael called.
Yeah.
Conveniently left out.
Is that legal?
I, I, I don't know.
I think the way around is he, he did say, he said the words he said, obviously they edited it.
But you changed them. You took them out of context.
Yeah. Look, I'm just saying, be careful when you think you're watching a documentary sometime. There's a lot within a documentary.
Right.
And Willie never went to the Indianapolis 500. Yeah. There's a lot of cooking inside a documentary.
Yeah. Well, a lot, most documentaries are to prove a point. So they're trying to prove their point and, uh, they, uh, muddied it a little bit.
Yeah. I mean, as a guy's done it a few times, you know, there are certain, I, I remember when we were doing the Newman doc and, uh, Jim Fitzgerald, which is driving mate and kind of his best friend. And they went and did a race in Florida and Fitzgerald died in the, in the race. And he probably died of a heart attack and then hit the wall. But no one really knows. No one knows if the accident killed him or if he died and then
Lost control.
Lost control and hit the wall. Um, but I remember, I remember, you know, at the time, it's like, it's like, we had to find a picture of Paul Newman sitting in his car it's like, it's like, we had to find a picture of Paul Newman sitting in his car, looking upset because of, when I was talking to Bob Sharp about it, I was like, well, what did Paul do in the race? And he said, he went back out after they cleaned up the wreck. He went out and he drove for another three laps and then he came in. He couldn't continue. And we had to find a picture of him sitting in his car, looking sad, which we did, but it wasn't from that race, you know? It's like, there's a, we have to do a fair amount of that stuff because there is no footage of him in that race. And that's some of the stuff that goes on. That's not, that's not cutting up dialogue and putting it together, making something else.
Yeah.
Yeah. But there's, you have to do some of that stuff.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if you guys have heard the new Lizzo Cardi B song rumors, but it's kind of great.
It's Adam's ringtone.
Yeah. Um, so you, she, they, they should be happy about it. They collaborated. They, they put out this video. They put out this song. It's due in gangbusters, but Lizzo's not so happy.
Oh, I saw her on TMZ.
She's crying on her bathroom floor over some hurtful comments aimed at her size and her race. Uh, TMZ reports that Facebook, which owns Instagram, agreed to delete the worst of the insults and deactivate a lot of the troll accounts that violated terms and conditions around hate speech. Um, here's a clip of Lizzo, who appears to be crying on the floor, speaking directly to the fans and the haters.
If you love it, thank you. If it's meh, thank you. Cause at least you gave it a chance. At least you listened to it. That means something to me. For the people who just always have something negative to say about me that has nothing to do with music or the content of my character or me as an artist and just has everything to do with my body or whatever trope you think I fall into. Suck my pussy from behind.
Yeah.
Cause y'all motherfuckers gonna be the main ones catching up.
I don't know what that means, but I did, I think I was able to evaluate the suck the pussy from behind.
That part more effective.
Mm-hmm.
Direct.
Yeah.
It's so weird that everyone must address everything all the time. Like you're famous. You put a lot of stuff out and X amount of shit's going to be negative. It's all right. You're rich. You're fine. Don't need to address it. Doesn't she play the?
The flute.
Oh, the flute.
Yeah, really well. Um, uh, in case you haven't seen the video, and I, I just saw it like yesterday and I, I thought it was kind of fun. Here's a clip from rumors, the new song with Cardi B, who looks very pregnant in this video and Lizzo.
You say long haul trucker?
No, backup dancer, professional dancer.
That's, that's good. Right.
Nope.
Yeah. I'm Tom Petty.
No, I perform in concerts. We did, uh, American Airlines Arena last night.
Hold on. Gina, you should do this. You're a chick.
Thank you.
Sorry. I appreciate it, Brian.
You looked at me.
Yeah, you're right. I looked, I looked at you.
Yeah. I'm a backup dancer. I go on tour.
Why don't you back that big ass up and give me another beer? Do you work here?
No, 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 no. I don't work here. We're just here for the night. I'm a backup dancer. I'm on stage.
A ton of videos with a ton of backup dancers. I see those J Lo videos. I see those Britney Spears.
Do. Every night in a different city.
Okay. First off, how do they transport you? C130? You ain't got to fit a coat seat, baby.
I don't know what you're talking about. I get paid very well to dress scantily clad, twerk. The crowd goes crazy. Everybody loves it. Different city every night. Costumes, lights, everything.
Yeah. Step back. Let me look at you again.
Yeah, right here.
Oh, boy. Well, first things first, it's mathematically impossible for you to dance every single night in a new city and maintain your morbid obesity.
Do you want me to make a clap?
Hmm. Librarian, am I right?
No, my mom was actually librarian.
Hospice nurse.
Hospice nurse? No, I am a performer.
See, uh,
I'm in the U.
Traffic cop, not, not, you know, standing in traffic, you know, waving people. I'm, I'm going to guess your profession.
Are you hearing me? I'm telling you.
Secret shopper for Arby's. Huh? Am I warm?
I, I've tried to tell you a thousand times. I dance for a living. Do you know who Lizzo is?
Hold on. Open your purse. Could I have a couple of those nuggets?
What are you talking about?
Well, you must have chicken on you.
I am on a very strict diet. I perform every night. I gotta have stamina.
Miss, uh, sound check is in 20 minutes.
Oh, thanks, Rob. Thank you.
Here's your milkshake.
Oh, oh, erodee.
No, no.
And see, yeah, those are some big gals.
Yeah.
By the way, uh, post, uh, this is, uh, I don't know, 40 years on from the fridge, but, uh,
Perry?
Those big gals can move now.
Yeah. Oh, he's backup dancers.
Yeah, I know. But there was a time when if you were
A bit more stationary.
Five, seven and two, 45, you just didn't, didn't move that well.
Well, and to your point, um, remember how much, well, I don't know, so worried about him. We don't know where Richard Simmons is now or what he's doing. But I used to go to Slimmin's. Yeah, but he's holed up in his house. I used to go to Slimmin's in Beverly Hills because it was so much fun. You could take actual jazzercise from Richard Simmons, who would scream. Every time you looked at the floor, just to like, you know, when you were moving, he'd come up to you and right in your face go, don't look at the floor. There's no cookies down there. And he would go super crazy on everyone, but everyone was all different sizes and there were women who were so big, they weren't really mobile anymore. So there would always be chairs for them in the back and they would just do the arm exercises, the arm jazz.
You gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
Did Susan Powder go nuts too?
She's still around.
I don't know.
Still around.
I looked for semi recently, years or so ago.
Well, remember the whole thing with Richard that like, it sounds like his maid kind of like took over his life and it's kind of like keeping him socked away in his mansion in Beverly Hills.
Yeah, it is like, it's sad, but you also know you've arrived when, when your helpers takes over your life.
Form a coup?
Yeah.
Yeah. He, I'll never forget on election night, it had to be, I don't know, seven, eight years ago, whenever he got really teary eyed, asked us all to stop, get a mat to sit on, and he proceeded to cry and give us a speech about being the president of our own hopes and dreams.
Wow.
He sure did.
Yeah, he's, he's poised for a comeback.
I would love it. Unironically, I would love it.
Yeah, I, I, I could live in a world with some Richard Simmons.
Absolutely. He's the best.
He'd go on Letterman and jump up and down. Yes.
You, you were asking if Susan Powder was insane or when, when nuts. Um, as a horny Wikipedia, as of 2012, she was living in an earth ship in New Mexico.
Oh, yeah. That's where, that's where I want my Susan Powder to be living. That's great.
Is that like an adobe house or something?
Yeah. Yeah. From the picture I see.
That's fantastic. Stop the insanity, Susan.
Wow. I miss her. All right. Let's bring it home.
Okay. I'm Gina Grad and that's the news. Well, that's fine, boy.
That was the news with Gina Grad.
For watching Jim McMahon.
Doesn't he walk like a marionette?
Yes.
Look at that strut.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kayla.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. You can go to adamcarolla.com because, um, I'm going to be in Minneapolis at the Acme Comedy Co. coming up, uh, next week and maybe a few tickets left. Some of the shows are sold out and Catalina Island doing a standup show September 5th. Royal Oak, Michigan, doing the music theater there, September 10th, Kansas City, going all over the places. Go to adamcarolla.com and you can watch, uh, Going Racer. We have eight new episodes on Pluto TV and our chassis channel, 687. Joe Busciano, you can, uh, check out his, uh, campaign. I think you should go to his website. Joe Booth, it's B U S C A I N O dot com.
Both for Joe's, but for Adam for trophies.
That's right.
Oh, my God. Oh, oh.
Very real.
So until next time, it's Adam Carolla for Joe Busciano and Gina Grad and Mal Brian saying mahala. Ooh, I want some of this.